You know, Suzie's grandmother's wife's husband, you know, it's like.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, January 14th, to order. Can we have roll call, please, Mrs. Slater?
Sure, Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
I am here. Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen. Mr. Nielsen is excused and Mrs. Klein will be in your room.
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted, Dr. Patz?
Yes.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is community comment. Per Board policy, we allow up to 15 minutes of comment. Would anyone like to make a comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski is our second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Item five, school board announcements. Are there any announcements?
Well, I did like to share that I did attend the middle school breakfast in December. Wonderful kids and wonderful parents, and they did a lot of positive feedback about their experience at the Saber Center because some of the holiday concerts were there, so it was good to hear the community, the positive feedback.
Thank you.
I have something. I had jury duty last week, and I ran into a young woman who was behind me in the security line to get in. And we were talking, and I noticed she said she was 18, so I asked if she was in high school or college. And she said she went to Madison, but she was from Franklin, and I said, "Oh." And she's like, "I just have to tell you that Franklin really prepared me for going to college." She said, "I see a lot of kids struggle, and I'm very grateful that I got to go to Franklin High School and get that preparation." So I didn't, she didn't, she knew I was from Franklin. At that time, she didn't know any of my association with it. She talked about going back to the high school, how cool it is now, and how neat it was to see her teachers, and she just, she praised Franklin a lot. She talks about it all the time. She said it in college, at UW-Madison. So just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have one other announcement, just so the Board's aware. At the WASB convention next week, we have a team of presenters that'll be there. Room will be packed, I'm sure, so we've got Judy. Tell me, have we got Judy, Wendy, Chris, Nick?
We've got three of our system specialists, Amy Cowell, Katie McBride, and Chad Kafka, who'll be presenting on how we've implemented our educator effectiveness model, and there'll be a little piece on our compensation model there as well, but mostly how we're using system specialists to coach teachers to be more effective in the classroom.
It has a Friday time slot, doesn't it?
It does, Friday morning.
It's like the last one to know.
Yeah. We submitted a little late, so perhaps that's why we're on Friday.
A couple other sessions maybe along that line is I know Monomni Falls has a presentation on Lean and how they've implemented that, and at the county, we've also done a Lean program and have heard, heard her superintendent speak on that. It's very, it's very exciting to hear and something that you probably would enjoy listening to. And then also, another session is on a joint project that Waukesha County, the school district, and the city of Waukesha put together for a joint health center where employees can access healthcare during the day and some other hours. Another joint project with other entities of government. It's going to save everybody money, so. Kind of local area projects that we can all be proud of.
Thank you. Those are great announcements. Thank you. Item six, board calendar. We have a regular board meeting on Wednesday, January 21st, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 p.m., and a regular board meeting Wednesday, February 11th, 2015, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 p.m.
On our last agenda, that meeting was not January 21st. It was listed as a 28th because they're usually on the 2nd and the 4th. I was wondering, is that an intentional change or?
No, it could be a typo on the calendar. It should be the 28th.
Yep.
It should be the 28th.
Thank you. Item seven, I'm going to move that down because Mrs. Klein is involved in that report, so if that's okay, I'll move that down. And we'll go to item eight, reports and presentations, the business services report, district audit report. Mr. Milzer?
Yes, we have our financial audit for, from 2013-14 tonight, and with us, we have Brian Helft, our auditor from Riley Penner and Benton, and Michelle Elsheski, our comptroller. And Mr. Helft will go through the audit, kind of set the stage for that, and then any questions that you have, we can cover that.
Welcome.
Thanks. So I'm Brian Helft. I was the, in charge of the audit. We did the field work over the summer and then issued a report in November this year. You all have a copy of the audit report. It's 52 pages, and I'm not going to go through all of that. I'll just kind of do a brief rundown. The first two pages are what I consider to be the most important part of it, and that's our opinion on it, saying that we gave an unmodified, clean opinion, and that the financials are, look good. Followed them by pages three through 10, which is the management's discussion and analysis, and that's something that Michelle puts together to kind of give a more plain English kind of results, operations of the district. After that starts the basic financial statements, pages 11 through 17, followed by notes to the financial statements. After that, there's some required supplementary information where we compare our budget to actual and also have some information on the other post-employment benefits. Following that is other supplementary information, kind of back-schedules that feed into the main financial statements. And then, starting with page 41 through the end, deals with federal and state single audits. Basically, we have to do more in-depth looking at state and federally funded programs, so that's what that relates to. Just some key highlights. The general fund had a decrease in fund balance of a little over $2 million, and, which is almost all because of a transfer that was made to the long-term capital improvement fund of $2.3 million. So if you don't factor that transfer in, the general fund had an increase of about $277,000 for an ending fund balance of just over $17 million. Looking at budget to actual, expenditures were budgeted to be about $44.8 million when actual came in at $43.9. So you came in, your expenses came in under budget, which is a good thing. Revenues, you're budgeted for just under $49 million, and actual is just over $49 million. So again, your revenues are more than what you budgeted, so both of those are kind of going the good way. You paid off $2,335,000 in general obligation debt during the year, and also had additions, capital additions of about $20.7 million, which is due to the high school addition and renovations. And I believe there's still another $11 million or so to go, as of June 30th, that was. We also issue a management letter, which is to the Board and management, where we are required to disclose any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, and then also give them other comments. The first one, a significant deficiency for the preparation of financial statements. That's no change from past years, and basically, it's a requirement for us as auditors. Every single district I work on gets this, because unless you're going to hire a full-time CPA on hand to write the financials, like, we're required to disclose this. So to get around that, we prepare the financials, and then we rely on Jim and Michelle to review that. So that's the kind of system there. There were three other comments. These are just kind of FYI, not things against the district. There was a state special ed finding, just for a few students during our testing. They had been claimed for state special education aid and then transportation, as well as regular transportation aid, so kind of double counted. Purchase card documentation. It's just a reminder that all receipts should be turned in accompanying all purchases. And then there's a comment about the actuarial report for the other post-employment benefits, and the district will need one this fiscal year. After that, it's just basically required communications. We didn't have any difficulties with the audit. That's about it. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to hear them.
You had mentioned that the total revenues were close to budget, but you used the number 49 million? And I'm on page 15, and I see total revenues under total government funds of 59 million, and even under the general fund is 51 million, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I was wondering where you were getting that from?
I was just looking at the general fund.
Okay. The revenues are on page 15?
I don't know. I got it from page 34. Oh, I know what it is. Okay. On page 15, that includes Fund 27, and I guess when I, the numbers I got for the top were just Fund 10, so.
Okay. And maybe there's a question for Jim, but in here is the money from the people who were collecting money to help us offset the cost of the field addition, the football field?
Yeah, whatever.
Is that showing in here?
Whatever would have been collected by the end of that year, by the end of 13-14, would be in there as revenue.
Okay, is there a spot?
Would have gone into Fund 21, so.
I think that's on page 38 and 39, Special Revenue Trust.
Okay, what, 38, 39? Which is it, 38 or 39, and which, where is it?
So I think all those donations would be on page 39, the $944,000.
So it's not in the general fund?
No.
Was the expenditures in the general fund?
No.
Not that portion. It wouldn't be the, it wouldn't be the entire $944.
Right, that's everything.
That's everything in there. I think it was a little over $300,000. Three, 3, 350. I could get an exact number for you, but it's right in there, but that's the place for it.
Okay, as I was looking, I just wasn't finding it, so I asked. Thanks.
So you just match the expenditures to the donations received and balances in general fund?
Right.
I just, is that all you have, or?
That's it.
I have a question on the letter. When you talked about the post-employment actuary report, it does state that it was supposed to be completed as of July 1st, 2014?
Right.
So.
That's the valuation date that the actuaries use. They won't actually be doing the work until sometime this year.
Okay, and so then that would, I mean, we made significant changes in that post-employment area, so that would be then reflected next year?
Correct.
And would that impact then the notes on, where would those changes really come through then?
Page 33, I went back.
Like note nine, is that where?
Yes, note nine sounds right. All of that changed from the new actuarial report. Sorry, footnote eight.
Eight, so this, they would, we'd expect it to be less? Just throwing it out there.
I'm not sure.
Significantly.
Right.
Okay, then. I also have a question on, relative to the purchase card documentation. As you probably know, the Board receives the check register each month to review each transaction as kind of our role of oversight. However, we do not see the P-card at the transaction level. Is that inconsistent, or what, you know, in your, what would you expect to see? And how is, could you comment, please?
I, I mean, I could, it's what the Board wants to do. I guess at that level, it'd be, you're kind of up so high, like, that level of detail. I don't know.
What do you see in other districts? Do they, I mean, we're already looking at the transaction level for the cash, for the check register, so why would we not look at the transaction?
Correct. Usually, it's, I see with key cards or credit cards, it's approved by like an immediate supervisor, either principal or business manager, and then the Board each month would look at the gross payment, not on a detail level. That's what I see at other districts.
Do you see check registers, though, at the check level?
Yes.
Is that consistent, though?
I think it's more like an invoice. You don't see every line on an invoice when we order things, even a large order. For example, technology, you don't see the line items, even though each line item is maybe $1,000 or not so much anymore, 700, 500, something like that, but it might be $700,000 or $800,000 worth of order. But then we explain it, because the Board's indicated, you'd like to know if it's $50,000 or more, you'd like to know what that's for. So that's the method that we've used on that.
It's, I guess I would, you know, it's not like an invoice in that it's to a single vendor. That's what makes a difference in an invoice, as an itemized invoice versus a payment to a vendor. Each payment to a vendor is a payment to a vendor.
Yeah, yeah, but I think these are minimal, they're minimal type expenses compared to that. I mean, those are, those are high-level expenses, even at an item level. Where on the credit card, they're really fairly minimal for the most part, and then we identify the large ones for you.
Okay, thank you.
First, for the record, I'd like to note that Mrs. Klein arrived at 6:11 p.m., and then I have a question for Mr. Milzer regarding the special ed transportation. Regarding the lists that we keep as a district, do we check off on either Oasis or Skyward somewhere whether a student is special ed, so that when, how do you formulate your list? Do you have something automatic?
For transportation?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is somewhat annoying from the Department of Public Instruction, not our auditor. Regular transportation, the state says, if we're hazardous transportation, we have to provide transportation for every student. So we set up our routes to provide transportation for every student. Now, when it comes to the backend and it comes to paying us a bit of aid for that, they say, "Well, we're not going to pay you for every student, even though you had a ride for them. Prove to us that they rode, and if they rode, we'll pay you for them." So then we have, we started off by working with the bus drivers, checking off on lists, and that became a nightmare. And so now we send to every regular ed parent a sheet, "Did your student ride the bus at least one day?" Yep, they sign it, and they send it back, and all of that goes into a list. But sometimes, the special education parents get ahold of one of those, "Oh, I didn't fill that out. I'm giving that out." "I'll help you with that. I'll fill that out," and they check it off for their student, but their student is special education, and then they get on that list that they rode. And that's what happened in this case. We had a couple of those turned in, so. And we have 3,200 students riding the bus, and we've got to double-check those. So that's kind of where it comes from, but we removed it as soon as they found it, because we can't be claiming both of those. We know that.
So you're saying that we, in the past, or even some other districts, either every day or sometime during the week, they actually monitor and check off students?
Right, we would do it three, four times a year to make sure we got every possible student. And then we eliminated that and went with this way, asking the parents, "Did your, did your student ride?" And then we have documentation for it, because we have to have that, too.
Is that administrative rule or legislative requirement?
I think it's an administrative rule from the Department of Public Instruction.
Waste of effort.
Does it sound like a waste of time?
It does sound like a waste of effort.
It's not the only one.
What do we do with the legislative to stop that?
I'm not sure.
Who wants to talk to somebody and say, "Come on, this is ridiculous."
It is.
So you're confident with the way we're doing it now versus going back to checking it off once a week? Even though it's time-consuming?
Yes.
Okay.
It does work out better, except for instances like this where we have. So our, we're going to put a checkbox on the form to say, "Is your student special education?" And if they check that off, then we don't use that form. We think that'll be the easiest way to try and cross-check them.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to move back up to liaison reports, item seven, community and governmental relations Saber Center community involvement sessions. Dr. Patz?
Yes, we've established two listening sessions for the community to come in to tell us what some of their views and maybe expectations are to some degree for usage of the Saber Center. Melissa, were you involved in one of those already?
I am attending one tomorrow.
Okay, that's what I am, too. What it's, the intent is just to bring anybody who's interested. It's been publicized, and if anybody wants to come in to say that, you know, for example, we have a group that's coming in that would like us to consider our facility to be used for a community theater. And we've had different people that want to come in and say, "Well, could we use it for presentations of small ethnic groups and those kinds of things?" Others would, might come in and say, "Well, we want to see a lot of outside groups coming in for entertainment," so on and so forth. Basically, it was just to give the community an opportunity to say, "Here's what we would like to see." And that's really all it is, and we're taking those into consideration. Steve Kraus is leading that up, and we have a consult coming in to lead those. And so Melissa will be part of one tomorrow, as will I, and so far, that's really where it's at. We have nothing to report. We don't have the information yet, but I will bring a report back to the Board when we have that completed.
Is there any opportunity for, do you have to be there physically, or can you submit online?
Right now, it's physically, but we'll probably do something online, too, after we do this.
In the meantime, if there's anything that you'd like for me or Dr. Patz to share tomorrow, I'd be happy to take any comments or ideas back to the group.
If anyone can think about that and send you an email?
Yeah. I think the one I'm going to is at 11:00, so anytime before 11:00.
You can send it anytime.
Yeah, you can.
It'll all go back to us, and that's the purpose is for us to learn what the comments might be.
The calendar's pretty full?
Pardon me?
Is the calendar pretty full, so far, and what's going on up there?
There's a lot going on there, yeah. It's, we've had to turn people away and had to tell people they couldn't do things.
And it's on the front of the website? Is that kept up to date pretty?
They don't have their own, do we?
It's right on the.
We haven't completed the Saber Center website yet, have we? No.
There's an event schedule.
It's under District News on the front page, community workshops.
Right, but there is an event schedule, but it hasn't really, doesn't go past.
Oh, it does, yeah, it's up here.
I'm sorry, did you say how many people you had sign up for this for tomorrow?
No, I didn't.
No.
I don't know.
Are there any other comments? All right, we look forward to hearing about it. Thank you. Okay, item 8B, the Technology Department report. We have Luann Zalinski.
Hi.
Yes.
Lights come on.
And I think we're going to hold questions until the end, as it suggested in the report, if that's okay with everyone.
Can I just say one thing, though? There's a couple of just acronyms in there that I didn't know what they were, so maybe when you're covering that, you might.
Sure, I'd be happy to. All right. Thanks for having me give you an update on what's been happening with technology. Really going to focus on four areas tonight. Megan and I are going to team the first section on the district website and some work that Megan's been doing. Megan's really been the one who's leading it up. I'll share the information that Megan and I put together, and she's available to answer questions at the end if we have some. Also, we'll give you an update on the one-to-one implementation. A large portion of tonight's information will be about that, some of the things that we're seeing happening in the classroom, which is really exciting and powerful with those classroom examples. And then lastly, just a little bit, some changes on the requirements or lack thereof for the ITL planning. I think I mentioned that before, that there were some changes coming, and I have some more information related to that, so. First of all, related to the district website, we've been doing some work, Megan has, on just kind of gathering some information about what things we could do to maybe help the user experience.
Do you want to tell what the ITL acronym is?
I'm sorry, Information Technology Literacy.
I couldn't get the L.
One more name for it, right? So we went through some information gathering stages, and this will be ongoing, but to start with, Megan put together a parent survey. They went out to all of our parents to get feedback about their usage of our website, what information was important to them, how they access that website, those types of things. That's one piece of the information gathering. In addition, Megan's been doing a lot of research, and I have some background as well, on what's that best practice about web design, like, how many menu items should you have, where do people's eyes tend to travel, and some of that kind of design aspect of it. And then just an internal evaluation of our site, you know, what's theirs, current, or the things that we need to do differently to keep it maybe more current, those types of things. So that's kind of the work that Megan's been facilitating here off the start of the year. This is going to be ongoing and such, but that was where we, she started. So based on just even those few things, Megan came to some conclusions about some areas to get started with as a beginning point, which is the next slide, I believe. So some things that we're going to be working on, one of the feedbacks that came out pretty loud and strong was that parents prefer email as their preferred method of communication. We have some existing systems in place that could assist us with that, so we're kind of taking a look at that. We have some systems within the website itself where parents can sign up for newsletters, but that's on a voluntary basis. And then we also have like the alert now that we really kept more for the emergency side of things. But there's some other options and some ways we could go to make sure that all parents are communicated to via email, and we're going to work on pulling that together and providing it to the buildings and others, since that was the preferred method. She's also done some content and navigational updates. Our, you know, like you build a house, you keep adding additions on and additions on. Everybody wanted their stuff on the main menu on the front page. It was starting to become a little bit ugly and bewildered. So we worked through that with Megan and kind of condensed some things to hopefully make that user experience better for parents and community and others who are coming to our website. Many of the parents indicated that they use their mobile devices for accessing our website, and that's something in the works we haven't done anything with yet, but right now, our website isn't necessarily geared toward mobile devices. If you try it on your screen, it looks like a full-size webpage. You don't get kind of that mobile phones look, so to speak. So that's something that's on the radar, probably not a need. I think that's kind of a bigger project that would take to get there, but it was something that was identified as a need. And then the two features that came back to us that were most important, I guess, are to top of the list for the information gathering we did was the search feature and the staff directory. And so Megan's looking at those to see if there's some things that we can do differently to make that maybe a little bit easier to navigate and help our customers coming to the site to find the things they're looking for a little more easily than maybe they are currently. So those are where things are at. It's going to be ongoing. If you have any suggestions, Megan would be happy to, you know, email Megan with any of those suggested pieces, but that's where we're at right now and where she's planning to start. All right, then flipping over to the one-to-one. First of all, just everybody that's been involved in the one-to-one has really taken their own initiative to make it successful. And I really wanted to just shout out to our ITL aides in the libraries who are managing the tech devils, our library media specialists, our system specialists who are helping facilitate this, our technical support guys. Really, as a team, they've all had to come together to make this successful. And we've had some, either parents or community members and students, different ones, who have made comments to us of, "How many years have you guys been doing this?" Because it's just running so smoothly, from their perspective. So that's really positive feedback. Magically, somehow, we distributed almost 1,800 devices in three days. It was magical. It just worked. It just worked. The pre-planning that went into it, it went really smooth. We had parents that, most of our parents came and attended the information sessions. They got the information they needed related to that. And the students received that Chromebook camp, kind of the training on their devices with some of those kickoff to the school year pieces. We're in the plans now to start thinking about how we're going to collect all these things into the school here and, you know, figure that next piece out of the puzzle. But so far, that went pretty smoothly. Just a few little things around the technical support. The technicals have been, the libraries have been busy answering questions. It's not because they broke something under their device, but even if they have a question about how to do something or what have you, they, you will see a handful of kids in one of the high school every morning at seven o'clock ready to get those questions answered and send them on their merry way. We've had about two percent of the devices that have had accidental repairs. That's actually very low. When I had talked to other school districts, they're hitting closer to six or seven percent. So I'm really proud of our students that they're taking care of their devices and doing what they should be doing to minimize them getting damaged in any way.
Do you forget to bring them?
Sometimes. Sometimes they do forget to bring them. So then we have processes in place of what they need to do when that happens. So they need it every day. The teachers are very dependent on their lessons to have a device. So even if they forget it, they get a loner for the day, they have to have the device to access a lot of the information we're doing. So not having a device is an excuse to get along with any work, so to speak, so. And then we're working with A-Sus, our vendor that we purchased the devices from, to get our IT staff to be approved to do our own repairs. There's some, a little bit of lag on turnaround time. We knew that was going to be there and just working through some logistics to hopefully that they can do those repairs in-house and it'll save us some time and it's really more cost-effective for us to do that in terms of, they could probably swap a part out faster than they can box it up and ship it someplace in terms of time alone. So we're working toward that to help with that process. The next several slides, I took, knowing that I was coming tonight to do this presentation, our system specialist sent out to all the middle school and high school staff, "Give us some feedback." You know, what are you seeing? What are you seeing happening in your classrooms? What are the benefits you're seeing? And we had our list of benefits that we were hoping to accomplish that was part of our planning process. And those things are all happening and that's all great, but kind of some real examples, so. And I believe the middle school also sent it out to some kids. You'll see a couple of kid quotes in here at the, after this. But I tried to kind of categorize them. They kind of ended up falling into some groups of categories. I'm not going to read every single bullet point, but one of the things that came out was just more instructional time. They're not getting, you know, they're not wheeling, finding the cart, wheeling it in, waiting for the kids to log in and spending ten minutes getting even just set up. It's on and they're ready to go. So in some of our assessments that we do, like ACT aspire, the map testing, some of those pieces, they've gone without a hitch, which has been exciting. Mike is sure that he was at some curriculum and assessment meetings and districts during a time when everybody was doing some testing, I think they decided to update Java or some application that needed to run for people not running on Chromebooks. And it just created a nightmare and Mike just sat there quietly, he said, and did tell them that we had no issues because of the tool we had. So then some benefits that way as well. They have access every day. Teachers can depend on it. Special ed students are using the same tools as all the other students. Kind of creates that even playing field for them. When kids are absent, they have the access to the information to work from home. They have access to a variety of information at their fingertips all the time. Really proud of our students. They've got a lot of feedback of how much they're just taking the initiative to use the tools they need to do what they need to be successful in classroom. And that's pretty exciting to see. That's where we wanted to get and that's definitely happening because they have that access. Self-direction and personalized learning, more independence. Teachers are able to take opportunities that happen in the classroom and, "Oh, that's a good question. Let's go find the answer." And kids can instantly look that up. More independent projects, more tools. We've had students come to the tech depot and say, "Hey, I saw, I'm using this tool to organize my notes, my thoughts and running into this." And they've kind of gone out, sought their own tools to meet their needs, which is pretty exciting and motivating as we talk about personalized learning. It's really what we want kids to do is to take ownership in their learning and use the things they need to, to, which is, I think this is kind of a continuation of that. Another thing I think was part of the saving class time as well, but because more students are accessing the information prior to class, the time spent in classes is different and they can go in more in-depth and personalize it and differentiate a little bit different as the classroom teachers. Collaboration and communication, we knew that would happen. You'll see some of the student quotes. It was about, "I can email my teacher at any time." Peer reviews, comments in their documents, that type of thing is happening on an ongoing basis. Students are working together and so forth. Another benefit that's been mentioned is about the assessment and feedback as we talk about more formative assessments, kind of that dipstick of how are you coming along with learning whatever skills and concepts we want them to know. Some quick tools, using some technology tools like Flubber Room. And you'll see a picture of someone, kids using Kahoot, where the teacher's going to ask questions and they have like a dashboard and they can get feedback around certain, kind of a check to see where kids are at with learning certain things. They're finding that they're doing more frequent self-assessments and peer assessments with the kids. Kids are starting to track more of their assessment information because they have a tool to track them with and some of that, which is pretty neat. And some of the teachers are starting to use Google Classroom, which allows them to submit their assignments online through Google and teachers can score it, so to speak, and get feedback to them on a more fast basis. So that's been exciting. And then specifically related to contents and skills, so what some of the teachers said, they're annotating their comments digitally, they're using some tools. We'll see a picture later, kids are kind of using a split-screen approach to read what they're doing and take notes on the other half of the screen, which is kind of exciting. More peer review. They're finding that some kids are getting excited, like, "Oh, my art project can be saved in my Google Drive." Well, that's cool that I can access it anyway. So they're starting to kind of put those pieces together. I thought an interesting comment from one teacher is their writing stamina has increased. They're finding kids are writing more and longer by having the tool in their hands to do it with, which is, research says that. And it's great to see that they're actually seeing it in the classroom as well. And then those personal management things, note-taking, accessing, the kids are using their calendars. They have access to the teacher webpages and their handouts. A big piece on those students who are struggling, "Well, I have my notebook in my folder and my planner and the, it's all now in one device and it's making management for them a lot easier." And then just a couple of things that kids have said. You know, one, the first child here mentioned something about, "This is great. I have all my stuff in one place. And then if I want to leave my tabs open just the way I had them, like on end of school day, I think the homework just opened up a lid I'm ready to take off where I left off." They found that valuable. And the other student comment here was just about being able to answer questions and stuff at any time. And I think the student also said, "Well, sometimes I can't always get on my home computer. Now I know I can always get what I need to do and email my teacher when it's convenient or ready for me and I don't have to wait to get access to that home computer to do something." All right, just a few examples. If you haven't had a chance to walk through the high school specifically before school, during the school day, after school, I just grabbed some pictures. Everyone, almost every one of those kids has the device out. And every time I walk through those spaces, those collaborative spaces, those open areas, kids are always there, actively engaged, either working together or working collaboratively on their projects. I'm finding at least my thought processes, even after school, it seems like there's more kids hanging around at the high school in those spaces than I ever saw in the hallways when I ever stopped there before. And they're all seem to be engaged and not just, you know, chatting. That's happening too, but a lot of them are engaged in getting their homework done until their next activity, which is pretty exciting. This was this foot screen, just a sample that she was reading a passage and pulling out information for social studies. This was some instruction about not only are they using the tool, but what makes for good comments in a blog and how to be a good digital citizen. Student choice, this student decided, you know, this was, I think, the one who picked her own graphic organized and decided to organize her science information without really any teacher directive that that's what she needed to do. She jumped on and did what she needed to organize her notes. And I see the glass wall between these two classrooms. This is a joint English and social studies class, working together on creating some rubrics and persuasive presentations through the whole glass wall, which is kind of a neat, as we talked to all those collaborative spaces at the high school and how they could be utilized a little bit differently than we could have done in the past. Conducting experiments out in the hallway, recording their data, having their Chromebooks out and being able to do that. This was something more, I think, at elementary level, FIAED. They were, they could scan it with their iPads or their Chromebooks or device and take them to showing them what certain activities should look like or skills related to FIAED. This is a sample of the software called Kahoot, where you can do some formative assessment, get some immediate feedback from kids. One of our teachers, Jeff Allen, is in El Salvador on a lead right now and he's been sending images and videos back to the Southern Franklin and they've been using it to do writing prompts and some other pieces. So that technology, if that didn't exist, we wouldn't have that connection to his classroom back here at Southwoodland. Just kind of exciting for the kids to have that periodic interaction. There we go. Just, this is some third graders. These are on the max, the elementary school, using Google Apps. If you haven't had a chance, there we've seen, we've bought some heart rate monitors for FIAED this year. They've asked us to, we've probably got the projection unit installed and it's really cool to watch the kids in this space. Basically, they're wearing the heart monitors. They each are assigned a number up on the screen. They can see their number and they can see if they're in the zone or not in terms of their physical activity that they're doing. What's neat about it, what the FIAED teachers are telling us is those kids who are pretty well-conditioned because they're in a lot of sports and stuff, maybe didn't work quite as hard in gym class all the time. And now that they see their number up there, they're not in the zone, which means they're not working hard enough, it's motivating them to do even better performance in FIAED, which is pretty exciting. The kids love it. It's a really neat technology. So we have this projection unit available in the big gym and the smaller gym in the fleet for the community center now that has that ability to do that. So pretty powerful stuff to motivate kids to put up there.
And that's an outcome from their curriculum review and more personalized learning approach and helping them take healthy habits into their real world. And if you ever walk the halls, they're all sweating when they walk by.
All right. And then just the last piece to talk a little bit about the information technology plan. So tech, the information technology plan used to be required by, from us to receive E-Rate funds. E-Rate has decided to not require a plan anymore, so therefore DPI is not requiring us to have an information technology plan anymore. That being said, there is still state legislature that requires us to have a library plan. That was always a part of it. It's really the bigger picture. It has to be board approval. We don't have to turn it in to anybody, so I'm working through those details. They do have a new template for us to use if we want to. Our plan is to take our existing plan, which is still pretty current, and just make some tweaks and some modifications so that we have a working document for us just in terms of what we want to do, which is nice to not have to jump through hoops, just in fact, for jumping through hoops that we never look at, the parts that were required. So I'm working through that with our team and we will at some point have to come back, either with the whole plan or at least the library piece for board approval for the law. But the big plan, the every three years, DPI is recognized that should be an ongoing thing. It's not something you do every three years. It's just something you should tweak and change. So they've actually created a template to make that fluids, to be able to make that fluid so that we can put things there and just change things as we need to and update them. And if down the road, if it ever comes back that we're required to do it, we're really ready to go and have that in place. So that's the changes is that we don't have to have it required anymore, so. And that's what I have. Any questions?
I just have a comment. Thanks for including all the examples and photos and everything. That really brought it to life. And I just think it's really interesting that it's not necessarily something that I anticipated, but it seems like there's a real synergy between the technology and the new facilities that I think is really cool.
That was a big part of the design. And I would encourage you, if you've got any part of your day, any day, go in and walk through the high school. I think you'll be amazed at what you see. It'd be very different than what you might expect, but it's really cool to see. It's something.
Thank you.
So there is a camera in the Chromebook? There's a camera?
In, a camera in.
On the Chromebook.
Yeah, is there a camera?
They could take images off their screen.
Oh, off their screen, but not...
They can't snap pictures?
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, they can't take a picture? No, so QR codes can't be...
Right, right. That's what they're built on.
Oh, okay. So then what do we plan doing? They're all going to come back and then you get somebody else's next year? Is that what we planned?
We have a whole plan. Because we decided to do grades seven through eleven, I really needed to map that out upfront because otherwise we could end up with more Chromebooks in the end than we need to fill in with our ultimate goal of getting to grades five through twelve. So they are, the plan is they will all get their own devices back, but this year's juniors will have their junior senior year and hopefully the devices will last another two years. So those will get repurposed to other students at the lower grade levels when that occurs. And there's a whole transition plan that I'm working with our team on to do that. So there's that piece. And then as, as we talked before, some of those laptops and desktops hit their end of life cycle, we'll not replace those and do some days with Chromebooks along the way. So it's all mapped out and for the most part, we want this child to get the same one back that they've been taking care of financially and logistically. There's going to be some sharing because of the way we decided to do the rollout.
So we're collecting them all at the end of the school year. We're basically just storing them for the kids until the fall.
Yes, every district we've talked to said that is a good idea. You let them have them all summer, they come back in pretty bad shape. And we want to touch base with them, make sure that they're still working, that they reported everything, that potentially is damaged, do that kind of double check, make sure we get them all back. A lot of kids sometimes move out of the district in the summertime and all of those things. So we will definitely be collecting them. I'll have to think about it, seniors have exams through the last day, so logistics is how we're going to get those collected. They may need them right up to the end.
So any parent surveys on how it's going or teacher surveys on how it's going?
Teacher feedback, we've just done that really, some of these teacher feedbacks. Nothing to the parents at this point. We have not surveyed the parents.
I'm sure they call if there was a big issue.
You know, from my talk with the administration and those who are there on a day-to-day basis, there just isn't any complaints, to be honest. I mean, that they thought, you know, if they are, it has been brought forward. It's been really smooth. The kids are excited and very responsible.
I'm also wondering, because it's so keyboard-based, what are the keyboard skills on average of our students? And does it matter or do they feel? I mean, it might be...
There's been quite a bit of literature on that, that with the advent of texting, that no matter what you've taught kids in terms of formal keyboarding, they're probably not using it anymore because they're able to do things with their thumbs and their toes and everything else. You know, and you watch kids, and I've made an appointment to watch kids a couple of different times, and some are all over the place. It looks like they're, you know, on a concert piano. And I think it's just what they're used to do, but they're very good at it.
We do formal training. We actually lowered it down to second grade because of the Badger Test that's coming as well, and we know they have to have that dexterity. But to Dr. Pats' point, they develop their own style and they're efficient. And we monitor if their skills get in the way of what they need to accomplish, then we have to address that like we would any concern now because it is such a part of their work. I have to tell you, one of the things Luann spent a lot of time with her, the building administration on was selecting cases for the computers. And middle school selected a different case than high school. And I mean, they spent an inordinate amount of time and it was well worth the time. But as somebody who's in all the buildings all the time, and I've talked to some of the substitute teachers, we love the middle school case because their name is right here. So you know every student all the time, anywhere you are, because they have it up. And it's fabulous. And it's fabulous. So they think I know all of them because they realize I'm using your case. So that was a really unexpected bonus. And I've talked to subs and they love it too because it's just really easy to know everybody's name.
Luann, can I mention about the Aspire test? We had, where we have all these new tests required at the high school this year. And one of them is called ACT Aspire for ninth graders and 10th graders. And we had to test them online for ninth graders in the fall. Like it was October, the first week of October. And they were using their Chromebooks. And there's, we thought, well, we've got them, every kid's got them. We're going to test in the classroom so they're testing in their regular classroom environment, without going down the hall through some foreign environment with their classroom teacher who was trained on how to administer the test. And we were a little nervous about it. And the first day, there were a couple of glitches. And with Mike Dick's help and lots of calls to the company, we figured out those glitches. And we had no glitches at all for the rest of the testing session, which took another two and a half weeks or so. So we had 344 kids, they're ninth graders or something, testing with their Chromebooks over that period of time in all of the, the four subtest areas. Five, if you include writing, for ACT Aspire because it's just like the ACT. And I thought, boy, you know, that, that went pretty well. And then after that, I attended a CISA meeting. And we knew that there were some glitches because of some of the tech calls, but we weren't experiencing these glitches. And at the CISA meeting, there was a guy from DPI there. And every district that didn't use Chromebooks had all kinds of problems. They had all kinds of headaches to where they were doubting the validity of the task. That it was being interrupted. There were all kinds of headaches that we simply didn't experience because the Chromebooks, because the Chromebooks were there. So we felt confident that the tests were valid and given in a really good environment. And these, because we didn't know how it was going to go. The kids got these, these pieces of equipment like just a couple of weeks before we were testing. So it turned out great.
I have three questions and it was, one was partially just answered. Were Chromebooks the right choice compared to what other districts have iPads or laptops? So you just partially answered it.
And I would say yes. I mean, we did our homework, did our research leading into what our curriculum needs were. And that's why we picked the Chromebook to begin with. So and I hope that we'd go back.
Okay. And then it's out in the news that Internet Explorer is going to disappear. Is that going to have an effect on Chromebooks?
Yes, in the district, we rarely ever use Internet Explorer. And it doesn't run the Chromebook, so.
And my last one is, it might go to Megan, I'm not sure. Regarding the website, you know, you do parent surveys or you're going to be doing one. Do you ever consider actually having one, one-to-one interviews with people where you would sit down and just ask them while they're sitting there, how do you use the website? And where do you go? And not only with a parent or a student or a staff member, but with either a senior citizen or someone from another school district even, because they use our website too, just to see where they might have difficulties or what they might be looking for.
Yeah, I think the survey answered most of that for us. And they also had an opportunity on there to tell us what they had problems with, if anything. And we got very little response.
As Luann mentioned, we started with our parents to kind of make some immediate changes. If we're to go forward as we gather more information, if we're to go forward with bigger change to the website at some point, certainly gathering much more feedback will be part of that. I attended a training as part of my Wisconsin School Public Relations Association on website user experience. And that was one of the information gathering methods that they share that you could do. Sort of like focus groups and, and that kind of a thing. So it's something where you can even, you know, ask someone, find this on our website and kind of watch them try to do it. So it is part of the process and something to consider if we move forward, absolutely.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just wanted to make a comment to share with the board how much the one-on-one initiative has helped the special education students. This has been terrific for them. And I just, for example, today I had an IP and a parent was talking about the Chromebook. This happens to be a student at the high school. He feels just like every other student. He goes to his class, he takes out his, his Chromebook that looks just like everybody else's. He's got all his adaptations on there so that he can access them. He can put on his headphones and have something being read to him. Nobody really even knows that that is going on. And we just really appreciate Luann's worked real hard with us to make sure that our special ed kids who are, for example, very, very severe or non-verbal students who need iPads, we've worked on getting them their device and that would be an iPad if they have to have that for their communication and so on. But it's just been a terrific thing for our kids. And so I just wanted to mention that and share that with you as well.
That's good to hear. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. It was informative. Thank you. Okay. Item nine is board action and discussion items. And we have the WASB resolution discussion. And was everyone able to open?
Yes.
Here, okay. All right. So we'll go into those. And we have Melissa, who is going to be our delegate at the convention. And then we have Linda, who helped formulate these resolutions. So. And I've got to open mine here.
Well, there are, as you noticed, there are 17 resolutions that are going to be voted on at the WASB convention in the, in the delegate assembly. And I, you know, I don't know how you guys want to approach this. Do we want to go through each one and, and discuss it or?
That's what we've done in the past. We just go down if anyone has a comment on anyone.
Okay. All right. Well, resolution one is regarding creation of school districts. Any comments?
That was brought forward by a couple of local areas not too far from here who want to create their own. So it really doesn't apply much to us.
Okay. It sounds like they almost want to limit the creation of the school districts.
Right. The issue there was that citizens could kind of want to break away from a district and create their own. They don't want to be part of a city district, an urban district, so they could break away. So a discussion at the, at the committee level was that we can't, you know, we need stability in how districts are formed. And it can't be a, it's got to be hard to break away from a district. And that's.
And that's why they just added the language that needs to be approved at a referendum.
Okay.
I mean, if somebody wanted, you know, their own little school, they could, if it was too easy, can you imagine how that would work? So that was the issue there.
Okay. All right. Number two is school start date and pupil transportation. This one is about a waiver for the school start date to allow school boards that enroll a significant percentage of 11th and 12th grade students in AP and IB programming.
I don't think this affects us, does it?
No, I don't think it does either. I think you had to have 75%.
All right.
I guess just to help understand though, but you get to vote.
Yeah, you have to vote on all of these.
I have to vote.
So unless, so we need an opinion, so unless we're saying.
Do we agree with the recommendation, which is?
Yeah.
Say no to the first and yes to the second.
So it helps to have the administration's opinion on, on these. And then if the board agrees or disagree, you know, disagrees, then, so Dr. Pat said no on the first one.
I don't have that language. Is that in the library?
Yeah, actually, I think, I think you'd want to vote yes on the first one too, to make it more difficult. That's the way I understand it, right?
You want it to be by referendum.
Right. But yeah, I was thinking yes on the second one.
Dr. Pat, why are you recommending no on the first one?
Well, I didn't know how it was phrased. That's.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay. It's, it's confusing. I agree. I had to read it a couple of times. And then resolution three is also regarding start date waivers. And this one, I don't know how I, how I feel on. I would like, be interested to get other people's opinions. It's, it's just creating a resolution to encourage the DPI to grant a start date waiver to every school district that has been unable to reach agreements to align the school year start date with private and parochial schools for which the district provides public transportation.
My opinion on that was I would like to see us support it. It doesn't affect us, but I hope that will be a catalyst to eventually being able to give us the opportunity to create our own school start date by saying, well, they can do it. Why would we let everybody do it now? That's really my only rationale.
Yeah, I would agree with that too. Yeah, I think it, it tries to even the playing field somewhat between public schools and, and the private schools, so.
In our case, our private schools are going to start when we do anyway, just because of the busing. And how we run them.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess in general, how do we feel about the September for start date? If we, if there were no rules about that, where we start earlier?
We'd start in, I, I, my recommendation would be start in August, without question. The kids are ready, most people are ready, most parents are ready. They really are.
It wasn't, it's just no discussion because you're in the, the committee has. It's different parts of the state and how they are just firm on. It's got to do with the temperature, the water, it's just amazing.
This all started with the Wisconsin Dills Water Parks. And you go there now and you have more Russians than everybody else working and not as many of the high school kids.
Yeah. Well, I, I'm just opposed to the idea of them telling us when we have to start. I think it should be under the control of the local school districts. I mean, if they want to start later in, in other parts of the state, that should be their, their decision and it should be our decision as to when we start. Okay. 1514, this one addresses teacher shortages in technical education. Supports, yeah, I, I feel strongly that, that I'm in favor of it too. Do you guys need me to read it or?
Well, I think Judy is really in favor of this one.
Yeah. I think it's a very real issue that is important to be addressed. Okay. I'll put exclamation point.
Well, some of the discussion also was, I mean, you can be a good trades guy, but can you teach in the classroom? That was some of the issues that were raised. So I'm interested to hear.
We've drafted some legislation on this and it includes a requirement for some pedagogical training.
Okay, so we would just look at their technical skills. We recognize.
Requires some pedagogical training.
Moving to the, to number five. This one, I, I would like a little bit of explanation and clarification from the administration if possible. I'm a little confused as to the difference between course options and youth options. I assume the course options would be like the cap classes that we offer. I know my own personal experience, I know when my daughter took Japanese five two years ago, we had to pay for it. And this year, my son's taking it and the district paid for it. I assume that has to do with this.
Actually UW Oshkosh paid for it.
Oh, UW Oshkosh paid for it, okay.
And in five, though, the flexibility of the funding is something I believe we would support because we brought the money. Because we're going to have more and more kids taking that.
Right.
We're bringing course options before you with policy. It's quite major and the financial impact on a district is tremendous.
Yeah.
Because it's not just cap, it's any course K-12 that gets approved.
Wow, yes.
And two courses simultaneously by any child at any given time.
At any level.
Right.
Wow, yeah, that could be very significant. Okay. This one basically.
It's new law, but they, no money came in.
So this one basically supports additional adequate state funding to reimburse the cost. So we're in favor of that.
And I think on number six, I personally would like to see more coordination between the two.
Yes.
Because it's, it just makes sense. Makes sort of a no-brainer.
I, the only issue I had with this one was that it, it just seemed kind of vague. I didn't really like the language. It just, it supports reasonable limitations, but it doesn't really say what those limitations might be. I, I wouldn't want it, to see it used against students having these opportunities. But at the same time, it, it does talk about just coordination, so. So everybody can guess on that one?
I do.
Okay. Open enrollment, revise the open enrollment application window period, 1507. Shortening the open enrollment window. And I believe it's making it earlier, right? So that we have more time to do staff planning and so forth.
It shortens the window, shortens the window.
Yeah.
It was shorter, they made it longer and now we want it to be back.
And, you know, I believe, you guys correct me if you don't feel this way, Judy and Jim, but I'd like to see, I'd like to support this because get that window shortened up so we can provide, for the obvious, it stated here, the staffing decisions.
Right, right. Okay, that's what I was thinking as well. Okay. This one also has to do with open enrollment. An alternative application process. WASB supports requiring open enrollment applications submitted outside the statutory window period be subject to the sole approval by the school board of the, of the resident district.
I don't, I don't like that because if someone's from Oak Creek is opening enrollment here and they're outside the window and open, and Oak Creek says, yeah, that's okay for them to come here. That's the way I'm reading this. I don't want them telling us what to do. It should be rather the receiving district.
Correct.
Not the home district.
And a lot of times they can appeal to the state and they, and they could answer.
We don't have to accept them, do we? Just because Oak Creek says they can?
Pretty much have to accept them. We've gotten slapped twice, you know, yeah.
That's why they want to strengthen the fact that approval by the school board of the resident district.
So this one where, is a no?
No, we do, we want, we support requiring. Requiring applications to be approved by the school, only by the school board of the resident district.
We don't want that.
You want the receiving district.
Receiving, we don't want Oak Creek telling us that their open enrollment outside the window, kids can come here. We want to be able to decide that because we wouldn't be the resident district.
Yeah. The resident district is where they would live.
So you might have to, you know, you have an opportunity to speak on these. So you might want to, get some clarification on it.
So you can speak to it, you know, if people don't understand that, right? So was that clear to your committee?
Well, they focused on this for any reason allowable under the law. That's what they focused on, that these were just always whatever the, because they would always say in the best interest of the child and at that point, you got to do it.
There's some new, new changes to open enrollment that came with this. For instance, a child who you believe is being bullied in a district, you can open enroll in another district. They would qualify under this alternative application process. So as a parent, if you feel your child's being bullied, you can apply to open enroll in another district even though the timeframe has closed and we have to consider that applicant.
Still, if you only have space?
If you have space.
Space.
But that's pretty much a non-issue because you got to really dig to find you don't have space. That's how we got beat twice so far.
And I think, you know, the districts who lose these kids lose fun, so they don't want them to be going either. So maybe that was why this, this existed.
That's how I.
Because they don't want kids moving out of the district and they lose their aid.
That's more how I took it.
They're only losing half of it. The per pupil are only losing half of it.
And yeah, I. It's an odd, it's an odd resolution. I'm puzzled by why WASB has it here, but someone.
I think the key there is I just don't like the resident district having that sole authority.
I would think it would have to be a mutually agreed decision.
I would agree.
Okay. All right. I'll try to get some clarification on that. And I think I kind of understand where you guys is, where you guys stand on that. Okay. 1509, modify out-of-state tuition payment statute.
Don't like it.
Yeah, I thought this was really interesting. I had no idea that.
It sort of supports the voucher system is what it does. Take your money and go anywhere you want.
So you would support there being restrictions on Wisconsin pupils going out of state? That's what the issue is. They can go, if it happens on the borders, they just go across stuff?
If it happens on the border, my, that, that's where you chose to live.
And this resolution is to kind of close the door on that.
Right. Yeah, I, I, in reading some of the background, it was from, it was submitted by a school district on the border with the UP. And I guess the Michigan schools were kind of trying to poach their students by saying they started earlier. The kids would have more time to prepare for AP tests, that sort of thing. So I think, yeah, if we can prevent that, that's, that's good. Okay. All right. Boundary appeal board decisions. This is related, but I kind of didn't, I admit, I don't, didn't really understand it. No, 1510, I'm sorry. Boundary appeal board decisions. It's at the bottom of.
The pages are out of order here on the same page.
Electronic one. Oh, yeah, I printed mine and reshuffled them.
Oh, it's this one here. Yeah, it's out of order.
All it says is create resolution as follows. Considering appeals arising from tuition payment statute. All it says is create resolution as follows, considering appeals arising from tuition payment statute. I, I, without seeing the context, I think this one is sort of difficult to evaluate. No, that's all there is.
No, that's it.
Because then the top of the next page is, is fifteen eleven.
Something's missing there.
You've got a, you have, it's just, yours must be out of order too.
Yeah.
You have to, you have to move ahead. The book is out of order. Yeah, you have to, you have to go ahead two pages.
No, there's nothing else out of.
There's nothing, there's nothing else after it.
It's just that paragraph.
Oh.
In the background, it links nine and ten together and says they're part of the same issue.
Okay. Well, all right, well, I'll get some clarification on that one as well. I'm sure I'm not the only one that, uh, will be asking about it. How did you decide to, to move some of these forward?
It's voted by majority.
Yeah, I mean.
And it has to do also whether, um, it has a policy book. Which is pretty extensive too, and whether something was already in there, and it's by majority vote, so sometimes things get voted. To go forward, because again, you have another opportunity to debate it at, at the convention, so. Our role is not necessarily give a definitive answer, but whether we should move it forward or not.
Right. That's the job of, of the delegation, right. Okay, so moving on, eleven, um.
The, the text on the top of that page, um, that has to do with retain tenure status.
They're out of order.
They're out of, that's not part of this one, though.
Yeah, okay, it's.
Oh, yeah, I'm, yeah, the, the one that I'm looking at actually has resolution fifteen eleven at the top of the page.
Yeah.
I think, I think it, we maybe did like audits and evens or something. So Judy, I, these, um, this one, I, the next couple, actually, I was interested in your take on them. WSB supports legislation that would A, allow a person who is receiving a Wisconsin, a WRS retirement annuity to be rehired in WRS participating employment after at least a sixty-day break period. I mean, this is a discussion as to, A, how it, how does it benefit the district, and then B, how does it benefit the taxpayer as far as the board goes? So, I mean, how does it benefit the district?
Well, you know, there are shortages in areas, you know, which we have individuals retire from, that it would be good if they could come back, and in some instances, they come back on a part-time basis, so, um, I support retirees having the opportunity to come back and work if they choose to do so after a period of time. So it does, it does benefit us in that regard. In terms of the cost, um, you, we no longer have a salary schedule, so we determine what we're going to pay someone. So I'm, I'm not sure that a retiree would cost any more than any other individual that would be hired to work in the district. Right.
Doesn't make any difference, and chances are, if you had a chance to hire a good experienced person at a reduced rate, you'd want to do it, so. My position is we would support this.
Right, and they would actually be cheaper, because we wouldn't be paying WRS on them.
Right.
That's true. And do they currently then continue to receive their WRS annuity?
Do they what?
No.
And they continue to, they can't double dip, so.
I see what this is saying, though, the same.
The current rule is, that's the current.
Stop getting receiving a renewity if you come back.
They don't accrue any additional WRS.
Supports restoring to such rehired employees the option to continue to receive their WRS annuity. That's what this is suggesting, that they would, but currently, they cannot get annuity only as early.
But parenthetically, it says, but not accrue any additional WRS contributions or service.
So we wouldn't have to pay anything, so really, it's nothing off our backs.
Right. When did they change the, because that's a recent change where they can't get their annuities, accurate?
That's with the law, just, yeah.
Couple of years.
Couple of years?
Yeah.
It used to be a, just premark or whatever.
It was two years, right.
Two years.
And it was changed to, you couldn't work full-time. It was, you couldn't work full-time, then you could work full-time, and now you can't work full-time again. I think it was the last change in the law.
Yeah, there's, there's one further down the list about, um, healthcare issues related with rehiring retired teachers also. That, that refers to the number of hours per week. All right, um, fifteen twelve, this one is, I think this one, it said, it only affects Milwaukee County.
That's us.
That's, which is us, um, so.
The way this is written, I think we would support that.
Absolutely support this.
One hundred percent.
It gives us the authority that we, that we need.
Yep.
Okay, that was my assumption on that one. Anyone, any, women in disagreement? Okay, um, this one, rural school staff recruitment and retention. This is to help the rural schools, um, support state and federal initiatives to assist rural school districts in their efforts to attract and retain high-quality staff, including student loan forgiveness programs and grants for teachers who commit to work in rural school districts for at least a minimum number of years as determined by the legislature.
It, it doesn't really help Franklin, but, um, you know, this is our state, and.
I like it for kids.
We have children who need good teachers everywhere.
Yep, well said. Okay, um, fourteen, or fifteen fourteen, this is the one I was referring to a minute ago with rehiring retired teachers ACA issues. It sounds like there's some question about whether a retiree can work, come back to work without jeopardizing their eligibility to receive their retiree health benefits.
HRA, which, we, we don't engage in HRAs in our district, so it doesn't impact us, and I don't frankly understand it. Maybe Mr. Millsor does.
I think if it would help i- in this cause, we could be for it on their behalf, even though we don't have this. And the, the rules for Affordable Care Act could change at any time as well, so I, I think it's fine to be for that. It goes along with the same thing of being able to rehire our retired teachers.
Okay.
Because we could, if they work more than thirty hours, we could get caught on ACA rules to actually offer them. That's what we want.
Right.
Okay, um, this one is, uh, fifteen fifteen is, um, supports legislation to shift the emphasis of the Student Achievement Guarantee Education Sage program from class size reduction to achievement gap reduction. I'm not familiar with that program. Do, is that something that we?
No, Sage is, uh, a program where you have low numbers of children in the classroom. Maybe fifteen would be the maximum, and it's funded through the state. Um, we don't have those programs. But I, I, it isn't about the number of kids, it's about what's happening with the kids, and what work needs to be done to help them achieve. You know, just putting fewer kids in the classroom doesn't necessarily close the achievement gap, so it kind of makes sense to me. I don't know if Wendy has an opinion about that, or knows more about it.
That's the, I mean, the change is in direct correlation with research. You know, there's the, who believe that smaller numbers produce better results. So I think they're shifting the monies to match what research is saying.
The way it works now, once.
Research isn't saying that anymore.
Right, yeah. The way it works now, districts have kind of bought into this, so they have these, they have classes, they're funding with this funding. So they have those strict class sizes that they have to maintain, and then once two more kids come into the district, they can't get the money unless they hire another teacher, and then they get caught, then they have to drop the whole program, and they, so that's why they want it to be not based on class size, but like you said, on.
Right.
Achievement gap, kind of moving the, uh, the emphasis to where it should be, so this would be.
I think I would coordinate the argument on this one. If we have a position, I don't.
Yeah.
Well, you want it, you, you want to maintain the funding based on what they were able to do in reducing the gap, not strictly by the number of kids. So they can continue to receive the funding as long as they're showing that they are making an achievement, or reducing the gap.
It'd be nice if there were equity in all districts, like achievement gap. I mean, we don't qualify, that's why we don't use Sage funds. It, it's for lower performing districts, so we, we don't qualify.
All right, fifteen sixteen, um, allow school board members to serve as volunteer coaches or student advisors. Given certain conditions such as, um, they receive no compensation, and they are due as volunteers. I have issues with that. I have major issues with that.
You think it's a conflict of interest?
I think it's a, I think it's a conflict in, of interest in this, I think it's a burden on the school. I, let me say this, I have fir, I have firsthand. When I worked in Oak Creek School District, it happened there in error with a school board member. And it got rectified, but, so, we, we had it happen there, and it, it was a conflict in the business department, it was a conflict with other employees in the district as to how they react with a school board member. It, it, it just doesn't work.
Bad idea.
It, it is a bad idea. It's, it's just a bad.
It's a common law doctrine. You can't work for two losses.
I mean, even if it's voluntary, people look at you a different way, and you take this job here, th- this is the job you decide to take, and you have to represent your citizens, and if you have to start abstaining because you choose to do this other, other voluntary work, it's like, pick what you want to do.
But what about volunteering in a classroom, or volunteering in a library? How is that different?
Yeah, I, I, I take the opposite approach. I've seen this a lot in my career, and especially you see it in the northern schools.
Right, because they have fewer people.
You would never see it in our community, obviously, for, for a lot of reasons, and I'm surprised Oak Creek, with their size and everything, did it, but I think there's great advantages to it, and, you know, the, the ones that I've been exposed to have never been, I don't think I can say. They've always been like your freshman coach, or your eighth grade coach, or maybe a JV coach, and generally hasn't been a varsity coach. But I, I think it's been an asset to those districts that can't find good people to coach, and that's, that's an issue in a lot of places.
It was heavily debated. It'll be a good discussion.
Yeah.
Because like you, it's like a rule, you know, like I said, this common law doctrine says you can't have two bosses.
Well, the big issue that, yeah, one time that was going on was just payment. Can you be, can you be paid to do it, or can you volunteer? And, you know, according to this.
Conditions, they have conditions, right.
I, I can, I can see where it could, to Janet's point, I can see where that could happen. In my experience, I haven't seen it happen. I've had, you know, some really good board members who have coached younger kids. You know, freshmen-level kids and sophomores and so on, and, you know, to me, that comes a little bit to the personal integrity. If you can't do both of those, I mean, what difference would it be if any of you became a, a youth soccer coach in something not affiliated with the school system? How would that be any different? You know, coaching AAU team, how would that be any different?
I think what, what Janet's referring to, though, are just kind of the dynamics with maybe the other coaching staff and parent, maybe your parents so much.
I agree with that.
You know, they may give you, as a school board member, more, I don't know, you may get more authority or than maybe you should have as an assistant coach, or, you know, I don't know, just potentially, and I think it depends on the individuals involved.
And, and I could see where just other people, let alone the school board, other people would be, would take offense to that person being in that position, because they wanted the position. So they got it just because they were school board members, so I could see the dynamics of that, too. So there's, there's pros and cons, so.
Yeah.
Have fun. Have fun with that one, yeah.
Okay, I'll let you know how they vote. Fortunately, there are a lot of delegates, so my one little vote probably won't make or break the, uh, okay. Um, fifteen seventeen, teacher shortages and alternative licensure pathways. This is the last one. And it does specifically refer to content, subject or content areas where there's a shortage of licensed teachers. Talks about, they do need to have a bachelor's degree qual, and they need to demonstrate experience, knowledge, and skills in the subject or content area, training in, um, I can't say that word, pedagogy?
Pedagogy.
Pedagogy? Assessment and classroom management. So, does, I support that.
Okay?
Yeah.
I was confused here, because we have the, the one talking about, uh, the shortage of technical education teachers, and then rural school staff recruitment and retention, and here's something else where we're talking about how we can get more teachers in. I didn't think there was such a great teacher sho- shortage.
It's all areas there is.
There's definitely areas where there's a shortage, um, growing areas.
This technical thing help in those areas, and in, in the rural schools, that we have this, if we pass the one for recruitment and retention, wouldn't that resolve their problems before, we'd have to add, throw this one on the pile, too?
But the way it works, though, is that a district has submitted this for consideration, so we don't control how many submissions there are to this process.
Oh, okay.
That's why you have different perspectives that seem to be similar.
So two of these might pass, and one of them might not.
They can all pass, it's just positions that WSB will take if they have the opportunity for legislation to, to move forward these, uh, policies.
They're very similar in a lot of ways.
I would, in, in my reading of it, Alan, I, I kind of thought that this, this one we're discussing right now, it, it kind of covers the tech ed one that we already talked about, because this one is broader than that one. Tech ed one specifically for that particular subject area.
I agree.
And I think the tech ed thing is an issue statewide. It's not just in small districts, is it?
It's terrible statewide, but, um, our special education is getting very, very hard to fill as well.
So we will be in favor of this one also. Anybody else have any other thoughts on any of this, or, can, may I ask who is attending the convention?
I am.
Okay, so I'll see somebody there.
I just think, uh, I don't, I, I don't know the, you on the rest of the board, but anything with local control, as you said, is, is important.
I agree.
So, um, since we are kind of talking policy, I don't know if we can do it under this, but obviously, the state budget will be part of the convention, and, um, the school accountability bill is certainly front and center. Do, does the administration have some, uh, thoughts on that?
My take right now is until they do something to put accountability measures in place for the voucher schools, and the, some of these other schools that have no accountability, that they shouldn't be touching anything else.
What about feeling schools, though?
Well, I, I think you need to be identified, but we have mechanisms in place right now to do that with your state report card and some of those other things. And I think there should be some sort of a, you know, I don't know if it's penalty is the right word, granted, but I was reading that whole thing today, and it just, it just seems to be one of those that they don't have anything specific in mind that's going to help you remedy your situation. It's more about the penalty than it is about the remedy, and, like I said, I just, I'm, well, the superintendents that I know are disgusted with the fact that somebody's not coming forward to put accountability on all the charter schools, and the voucher schools, and those kind, because there's nothing there for them.
Yeah, I don't know, do you, is, are we expecting to see that expanded in this budget? What's, I don't think he's.
That accountability piece?
No, the, um, expansion of the charter schools.
Oh, yeah, I, I think it'll happen. You know, there, there's a, a pretty significant push to get into privatization and those kinds of things.
The accountability of, of private schools was one of last year's resolutions, you probably remember from when you were the delegate.
And they still won't do anything about it.
Yeah, I just don't understand the expansion without accountability.
That's what they've been doing.
So, it, it's interesting.
But to your point on all those, the current ones that are on the front burner, I really don't see that, what it, what it's doing. It, it's identifying the schools, I get that, but I'd like to see some sort of legislature, something, legislative action that says, okay, when you do that, here's how we're going to make sure that, that gets approved. And it says that to a degree where they're going to have oversight, and it could, you know, now they're, they're saying, well, we'll take it over and turn it into a charter school. That's pretty scary.
Yeah, because once you apply accountability standards, you have to figure out, because some, they're not all going to pass, some are going to fail.
Yeah.
And you've got to have that.
I think that'll be a huge argument if that comes up at your convention.
It, it's not really one of.
Yeah, and that's, that's interesting how, how these, all these resolutions and everything come out now and then all that is hitting the fan at this time.
There was an update in here somewhere too, near the back of the packet, if anybody's interested in reading further.
Later. Well, have we, as a board, have we thought about calling in some of our legislators? I mean, we have legislators that are, you know, in important positions at the state. Have we talked to them one-to-one, would that matter? I mean, we've never, that's because, you know, she's.
Yeah, through S W S A, that advocacy piece, you know, they do it as, as a consortium of thirty-some schools, but to be quite honest with you, it never gets anywhere.
But what if it's, we as a board had a conversation with Senator Lajo and said, this is what it means to us, you know, it's just. We've never reached out, you know, on a more personal level to talk to any of the legislators.
I think you need to do it as a board member, one-on-one with her and she's receptive to that, she'll talk to you. Anything else on this?
No.
Thanks, everybody, for your input. Good luck.
Have fun.
Hopefully it'll be a little warmer next week. It's not fun down there, so. All right, item ten, board meeting debriefing, are there any comments? Okay, hearing none. Future agenda items, we have an administrative, administration evaluation and recommendations on January twenty-eighth. The enrollment in chapter two twenty update, January twenty-eighth. And then the legislative advocacy conference update on the twenty-eighth. And then also on the twenty-eighth, it's not on here, but a board goals update. And then the W A S B convention recap discussion will be on February eleventh. And the standards-based learning update, February eleventh. Are there any other comments on?
Were we doing a tour at the high school, now that the art area is wrapped up? I thought we were gonna.
Yeah, we just sort of waited for that, I'll put something out to see what they were doing for everybody. And we're narrowing down on the date to have an open house too in February, so we'll get that confirmed, but would you like to do that ahead of time? Just go on a tour some evening outside of a board meeting, so we just have the time to meet there and go through, okay? I'll, I'll send out three dates and we'll see how that goes.
Because it's done now, are we done now, we have to?
There's a little bit still going in the northeast corner of the building.
Because we moved, we, we did the art area, they moved and now, or everything is all wrapping up, the whole project's all wrapped up.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alexander Dovitch, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Slater, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at seven thirty-five.